Without the music, I'm not the same man. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Glendale City Planning Commission dated August 16, 2017. May I have a roll call, please?
Planning Commissioners Asturian.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Saturian.
You're here.
Shabazian. And Chairperson Manukian.
Here. May I have a report regarding the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, August 9, 2017, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Thank you very much. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next agenda item is the approval of minutes, but before we do that, those who follow our meetings with some regularity will have noticed a new name in the roll call, and that was Saturian. I would like us to be introduced to our newest Commissioner, Vaiik Saturian. Thank you very much for volunteering for this position, and I feel lucky that the City Council chose you to be part of our body. Please take a couple of minutes and introduce yourself to both the staff, the other Commissioners, as well as the viewing public.
Sure. Thank you very much for being for such a good team. I did some studies, I looked into some of the tapes, and kind of followed some of the work that you guys do. Excellent job, so I'm happy to be a team member in this planning commission. So, as you mentioned, my name is Vaiik Saturian. I'm almost maybe over 30 years resident of Glendale. My profession, I'm a CPA. I have a CPA firm in Glendale for maybe more than 25 years. And besides that, besides my professional work that I do, I also very involved with the community, community organizations. This is the first time I'm getting involved in the city departments. I've always been in public school systems, I've always been very close with the Glendale Unified School District. I've been different boards, Glendale Educational Foundation, Superintendent's Advisory Board, Measure S Committee, and some of those stuff that always was very close to me. And one main reason was that I was also involved with very, very much with public school system and an organization, an Armenian organization by the name of Tavidian Mariamian Educational Foundation, that we do have an after-school program in almost 25 public schools. So because of that, I was very involved with the GUASD Board members, Burbank Board members, LAUSD, and we have an operation, which obviously is a nonprofit organization, and this is my volunteer work that I do. And we have almost about a team of about 45 teachers and almost about 500 to 600 students in seven different cities. So that was what I was doing all these years, and also running the nonprofit organization. And also, I was involved with almost every Armenian organization, starting from the church, the Armenian school, so community services very close to mine.
Really?
And that's why now there was a chance, so let's see, Mr. Agajanian appointed me to this commission, and I'm very happy, and I think this is a new challenge for me, and I'm very happy to be a part of this team, and I'm sure you will teach me everything that I need to learn.
Absolutely. Very good. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
All right. Moving on to approval of minutes, we have three minutes requiring approval, those of April 19, June 7, and June 21st. Are there any, just to make things a little bit more efficient, are there any changes to be made to the April 19?
I cannot vote for approve April 19, I was not here. But the rest I can.
All right.
Neither was I here, so that needs to be...
Okay. So then we need to set aside the April 19. Actually... Okay. Then what we need to do is wait for our next regular meeting, where hopefully Commissioner Shabazian, Saturian, and myself can approve it. For the time being, we'll set that back. As far as the June 7 regular meeting minutes are concerned, are there any amendments to be made?
Both accept.
We don't need a second. Do we? Okay. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Asturian.
Aye.
Lee. Aye.
And Chairperson Manukian.
Aye. Moving on to the June 21 regular meeting minutes.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second?
I wasn't here, so...
So you...
Right.
I second. Very good. Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Asturian.
Aye.
Manukian.
Accept.
Manukian.
Aye. All right.
Still gonna have majority.
Yeah, that's gonna be a problem with the April 19 one as well.
The April 19, I mean, it would be you and Mr. Shabazian.
Okay. We'll be able to do it. Very good. All right. Great. Moving on to oral communications, discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. The commission may question the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. Do we have any pink sheets regarding? No. All right, then, moving on to item number six, zoning appeals. There are none. Number seven, planning commission items, old business. 1203 and 1209 Glenwood Road and 1308 Bruce Avenue. Parcel map case number PPM 1701032, and various case number PVAR 1701033. Do we have a staff report on this?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant is requesting to subdivide two lots into three lots within the R1 low-density residential zone, floor/area ratio District 1. Currently, there are three houses on the two lots, as noted in the R1 zone, where one house per lot is allowed, and the applicant is requesting to create three lots so that each house and garage its own lot. I think maybe I'll just come up and point it out.
So, if you can hear, the property is located at the northeast corner of Glenwood and Bruce here. Currently, these are the two existing lots here at 1209 Glenwood Road, and then the other lot here on 1203 Glenwood Road. So currently, we have the existing house facing Glenwood Road here with an existing garage, and then existing house, which actually faces Bruce. And, I don't know, do you want all the square footages for everything?
No.
Okay. So then the house, the other lot has an existing house with a two-car garage, and then another two-car garage, which actually serves the house at 1308 Bruce. So the applicant is requesting to divide the property here so that you have a house here, here, and here, that each property, house and garage, has its own lot. Because of this lot line, now this property on Bruce, instead of having a street-side setback, now has a front-street setback, which is required to be 25 feet, and currently the existing house is at 18 feet. So they're requesting a variance for the street-front setback. Also, because of this line here, it creates interior setback issues because the garage eaves go into the interior setbacks at the existing garage here, here, and here. So they're requesting an exception for those. Additionally, so it's a street front...
By exception, you mean a variance?
The variance request is for, yes, for the street-front setback, and then the interior setbacks here for the garages. And that's for the eave projecting into the setback. And additionally, the average, for the subdivision ordinance, the average lot size, the is, the lot is required to meet, the lot, the new lots are required to meet the average lot size for the neighborhood, and they would not meet that requirement, so they are asking for an exception for that for the subdivision ordinance, as well as the variance request would be included for that for the subdivision ordinance. So those are included with your revised motions, the exceptions? You look confused.
No, no, actually...
So I think staff is recommending approval, as all the findings we think can be met are noted in your motions attached. We have a motion for the variance, which would need to, if you so choose, approve first, and then the, for the parcel map would come second. The, when other, I mean, the houses have been existing for over, I think, 96 years or something, this, the house here at Bruce is built in 1924. These homes on Glenwood were built in 1948. Somehow, a permit was issued for this house in error. So because at that time, it was only one house per lot was allowed. So that's, the request is just to create it so that each house could be on its own lot.
Oh. Does anybody have any questions?
Was in 1948, the zoning R1 as well?
Yes.
It was.
Okay, so...
Yeah, and the, all the surrounding area also is R1.
One question.
Mm-hmm.
I read somewhere about the error, and I just mentioned that there was an error, and the intention of the owners was from very beginning to have everything set on a proper way. But I couldn't find any place what the error was, just a simple error?
The code allowed one house per lot at that time, and somehow, they were allowed to build two houses on the one lot. So that would be the error of issuing a building permit.
I see.
When only one house was allowed, and two got built.
What is allowed clearance in front of the garage? I know it's an existing garage, but it's 15'7", and normally, the cars are, you know, 16, 17 feet, some of the cars. Yeah, you don't have a hard time, I mean, it seems like there's a stairway in the back of the house, too.
For this existing garage?
Yes, yeah, I know it's existing, but...
Right.
Yeah, you only have 15'7", including the stairway there, so I don't know how the cars go in and out of that garage.
Right.
So what is the required clearance in front of the garage?
Well, generally, you, it would be 16 by 7 for the entry. And you mean in an eight-foot wide driveway in a 25-foot turn radius?
Yeah, but you don't seem to have that.
Yeah, I think, I think because it was legal nonconforming, we, we only considered what was affected by the new line.
So when, when you start to divide, you know, do a new subdivision, do you still grandfather that in, or, I mean, do you, you know...
Right, that's what we were proposing.
So, so is that part of the also variance, too?
No, we didn't consider that to be necessary for a variance request.
Because, I mean, you have a pretty long driveway, very narrow, long driveway, and I don't know how the cars go in and out of that garage.
I really don't think it's a two-car garage, do you?
No.
It is not.
You're right.
I just wanted to...
Yeah.
But we have buildings that do have building permits, and all those structures do have building permits. We have, even though a permit was issued in error, we do have three homes on the lot that were built with permits. We also have garages that were built with permits. So we realized that we're trying to put a new lot line in on an existing development. That's what we put the new lot line in, so looking at items that basically, in terms of zoning, we're looking, okay, what did the new lot line create? The new lot line isn't going to create necessarily an issue with the garage. The garage is there, the backup distance is there, even that width of the driveway is there. So we tried to, we looked at an area, where would we have the least amount of impact putting in a new property line, and try to preserve everything out there to the greatest extent possible, but still allow the owners to have clear property ownership, so your house and the garage that goes with it would be on one lot. So that's why, I mean, that's why when you say we're looking at a variance, it is a variance because we are putting a new lot in, but we weren't looking at the total site for everything that perhaps doesn't meet current code today, because at the time they built the garage, it was permitted, and they did build it according to them. So we were really focusing on the new lot line, what variances did that create to the structures that had already been permitted?
I see.
So there probably are plenty of things on that site that do not meet current codes, but what we focused on is what was, what was changing with the line that we were putting in, or proposing to put in?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I might add, from a legal perspective, they have validly issued building permits, although it may have been issued in, in error, they have detrimentally relied on it, the city would be stopped from forcing a change in, and they have vested rights to maintain these now legal nonconforming structures.
So, so they do have a grandfathering?
Yes, they do.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but, but for the nonconforming, the city is under no obligation to do a lot/lot adjustment and, and afford them three different lots.
No, that, that's true, and that's why this discretionary matter is in front of a euphoria consideration.
Now, one more question. Is this three houses under same ownership?
Yes.
It is?
Well, it is now, I think there...
It is, right.
Maybe the applicant can answer that, yeah.
You will have plenty of time to talk.
It's my understanding, and it's in one condition.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. And I, does the applicant wish to speak, because I don't have a pink slip? Okay.
Be great.
So you're good.
Unless you have a question.
Are there any questions of the applicant?
No, I still have some questions from the staff.
Okay, then. Um, all right. We'll, then we'll just move to the questions from the staff without prejudice to the applicant. Should any other questions come up? They can get up and speak.
I just have one, kind of, one question for the applicant.
Okay. If you could please, your name and address, well, your name.
My name is Carl Yule, and I'm here for the Caliuro Trust, who owns the property.
Good.
My question is, just, you know, housekeeping purposes, you know, it's under one ownership, I guess it's not causing any inconvenience right now, so what is your purpose of trying to now, you know, do a subdivision here?
For the last 90 years, these two properties and the property directly north of this were owned by just one family member, and now the, my wife's parents have died, and it's in a trust, and she wants to give two of the lots to one sister and two of the lots to the other sister. The 1308 address, we found out, does not have a legal description. It's always been recorded as 1310 and 1308, which commonly occupies the same lot, which is not a legal description.
No.
And so, and now, because there's going to be two owners of the two northern lots, and one owner of the two northern lots, and one owner of the two southern lots, we need to divide it up for assessor purposes and things like that. But they were paying one assessment bill on all the properties together for 90 years.
Thank you for the clarification.
Well, actually, now I'm more confused. I thought there was three lots.
Three, three lots.
Three building, yeah. Yeah, but now, you said there's four lots.
The, the lot directly north is not shown, and it's not, doesn't have anything to do with it.
Oh, so there's a fourth one, we're just not seeing it.
Correct.
Got it. All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Now I'm confused. The fourth, the fourth lot, is that the one behind Bruce, behind 1308, the one that you were referring to, 1310?
Directly north of 1310, which is the last map there, there's another lot, almost, it's very similar in size, and it's like the twin house. No.
No, on the north.
North.
Which is on the top of the map. It would be here.
Yes.
Yeah.
What happens, what happens with that lot?
Nothing.
What's, what's on it?
It almost, it's a, it's like a twin house, it's a matching bungalow craftsman-style house. They're both built, the 1308 was built in 1924, 1310 was built in 1925.
So on that lot, you have two houses also?
No.
No, no.
It's on a separate lot.
It's a different...
There's a matching house.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, it's a different...
Okay, it's, okay. You're good.
Got it.
Thank you. Okay.
I have a question, not from you, from the staff, if I may, Mr. Chair. The, the average lot size that you're going to gain by splitting these lots for, or subdivising them, it's about 6,200 to 6,500? Approximately.
Approximately.
So what's this letter that Mr. Wolf...
Wolfgang Kraus?
Yeah, Mr. Kraus has sent, what is he referring to? Can you clarify that for us?
Yeah, well, Wolfgang was pointing out is that, the staff report itself points out that all the lots that are retreated meet the minimum requirements of the subdivision, or the zoning. However, we also have provisions in the subdivision ordinance, which require you to meet the average lot size. So while they meet the zoning, you don't necessarily meet the average lot size in the area. One of the issues that we do have in this area, it is interesting, is that right across the street from this, this project, they have a very similar situation that occurred years ago, and they actually have a very similar lotting characteristic. I did include a copy of, it's posted up on the board, of what the neighbor has, and you'll see, it's the same thing, where basically sometime in the past, I believe it was in the 20s, someone came through and actually did record lot, lot line adjustments. When the houses were, at least that first house was built in the 20s, they could have just deeded it off and created it, but because this was always kept under a single ownership, they never did it. So clearly, they built the houses, and it looks to me, especially given the age of these, that the intention always was to do what the neighbor did, and essentially have three lots. But codes changed, and so as we all know, if you don't come in and keep up with the current code, then you're left with a nonconformity, and I think that's what we have here, we just have a legal nonconforming situation, and what the applicant is requesting, he wants to remedy that. So it's completely discretionary on whether you wish to do so or not, but I did want to point out that we do have a similar situation right across the street, similarly sized lots, also R1. Just when you consider what is an average lot size in the area, you do have some smaller lots, similar characteristics right across the street from this one. So the other issue that Wolfgang was pointing out is that when you have an issue in the zoning code, you can do it, you can do a variance, as we're seeing here, for things like lot line adjustments, and you can, even though you do a variance, you still need to do an exception from the code, because one of the findings that we make for subdivisions is that you're consistent with the zoning code as well as the subdivision ordinance. So that's why, if you take a look at the motion, you actually have two exceptions, you have an exception findings for the average lot size, and exception for the variance or for the setbacks.
And so, right now, the way that it stands, it's two lots. So with the ordinance that we just adopted, the ADU accessory dwelling units, each one of these lots could build an additional 500 square feet dwelling in the back, or wherever they find a space as far as our code allows, correct?
Or convert the garage.
Or convert the garage.
Yes.
And so when you do it, when you split it in three, correct? Now each lot is going to be afforded to do one ADU, because they're all each legal conforming, not nonconforming, lots. So automatically, you are increasing the density to begin with, if you consider...
Yeah, if by creating additional lot, you're creating a lot, you're creating additional lot, not necessarily additional density, because the homes are already built.
Potential density, I don't want to get there. The other question that I had is, where, where is it, or do we have any precedent, that we have in order for a nonconforming property to become conforming, we have allowed lot splits and/or subdivisions? Do we have any precedent for that in the city? Because just being legally nonconforming does not give me enough reason to say, okay, so, because it's a legal use.
Excuse me, Commissioner, are you, is there a question?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's ask the question, and then we can deliberate and talk about it.
But that's, that's the question, is there a precedent for it? That you've taken a nonconforming use and used it as an, as a reason to turn it into subdivision, to allow a subdivision?
I don't, I don't know if there've been similar situations in the past.
Got it.
I just don't know the answer to that.
Thank you.
All right. So all questions have been asked? Great, now we can start deliberating on this matter. Since you asked all the questions, do you have any, any answers?
Well, I'd like to hear the rest of you, and then I'll chime in right after, I promise you.
Well, I'm a beginner, but I tried to kind of catch up with what we have here. So I went through all the documents and everything. Frankly, whatever that I read, it seems that everything gets in order, whether we are increasing the, converting the two lots to three lots, and we are kind of going through all these changes. But there was one point there, which you also mentioned, I think that initially, the intention was to have lots and the units, and then because of that error that was made, and that error, I don't think it was their fault, probably we, in the city, I mean, they made that error, so now we're correcting it, if I understood correctly. So if we're correcting something that it was our error, and we, now we are, because of their request, now we are making that correction, so maybe there will be some other issues that it's not that important, but probably we have to just go for it. So in my opinion, I think they have the right to ask for that corrections and just put everything in order. Technically, I'm not sure that if I'm covering every detail, technical part of it, but just looking from, just a person that looks into this data, and all the studies that the city clerk did, I mean, you guys did, all the opinions that you made, and the recommendation that you made after all these reviews and all those studies, I think you, you came up with the idea that we should recommend, I mean, your recommendation is to approve this. So my understanding is that probably that's what we have to do, make these corrections.
Very good. This is a tough one. The fact that these houses were built a long time ago, and obviously, you know, they had choice to, to correct it then, but, you know, it just took, took this, after nine years that they tried to, you know, to correct the situation, and now running into a nonconforming issues. But I do see that, that there was, it was not intentionally done that. I mean, it was actually, as city attorney said, and the staff said, that this was all legally permitted dwellings that was built on the lot, so although I have some reservations, I do not have any problem of giving the final approval, so I'd be inclined to approve this request.
And so, I cannot find the first finding. I do not find enough reason for a nonconformity. I do not find enough reason for a non-conforming use to be transformed or mutated into a conforming use, enough reason, uh, for granting a variance. For that reason, the rest of what I'm about to say is moot because if I can't find this finding, I can't approve the rest of it.
Okay, fair enough. Uh, I am of the opinion that, uh, it is, it's unfortunate whenever a city staffer makes a, uh, makes a mistake, uh, because ultimately situations like this come about, uh, where the, the only corrective measure is one which leaves in its wake other issues, like the unwieldy lot lines and whatnot. In any event, uh, that said, the property rights of the, the trust and, and, uh, the family need to be observed as well. There is a balancing of the interests that need to be, uh, taken into consideration, which is why I'm inclined to approve any motion that is, uh, made.
I'm ready to make the motion, Chair.
Very good.
Can I move, uh, that upon consideration of a variance case number PVAR 1701033 and after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all documentary evidence, similarly with regard to said front setback at 1308... Is that right? Oh, yeah, yeah, 1308 Bruce Avenue, built in 1924, where the existing front porch is approximately 18 feet from the front property line, where 25 feet is required. And the garage eaves approximately 19 inches from the proposed property line project greater than 30 inches into the new interior sep, uh, setback, where 30 inches is allowed and proposed lot line creates a new, uh, interior property line at the rear of 1203 and 1209 Glenwood Road, both built in 1948, with garage eaves approximately six inches and two inches from the proposed property line respectively. Respectively, um, which deemed categorically, uh, which project created the 30-inch into the interior setback, where 30 inches is allowed, is hereby deemed categorically exempt under CQAS Section 15301, Class 1 for existing facilities and is hereby approved, subject to compliance with the 12 conditions listed below, based on the following findings of fact and inclusive of the all one through, uh, 12, uh, findings. Well, that was a mouthful.
I can, I can hold your gamble for you one sec.
Point, point of clarification for findings, 12 conditions.
Yeah, I can second. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Astorian?
No.
Lee?
Aye.
Saturian?
Yes.
Jefferson Manukian?
Aye. Very good. Uh...
You have one more motion.
There's another motion that, uh, is, uh, required.
So I'll make the motion also. Upon consideration of tentative parcel map number GLN 1636, TPM, to divide two single-family residential lots into three single-family residential lots and after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all documentary evidences, similarly with regard to said tentative parcel map and related exemptions for average lot size and building setbacks, that the planning commission hereby determines that the TPM is categorically exempt as CQAS Section 15301, Class 1, existing facilities and that the TPM and exceptions are hereby approved, subject to compliance with the 12 conditions listed below, based on following findings of fact, one through 12.
Very good. Do I have a second?
Yes.
A roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Astorian?
No.
Lee?
Aye.
Saturian?
Aye.
Jefferson Manukian?
Aye. Very good. Congratulations. All right, moving on to Community Development Department updates. Do we have any? Very good. Comments from Commissioners?
Just welcoming Mr. Saturian. We're, we're looking forward to, uh, an interesting, your interlude was interesting to begin with, but we're looking for far more interesting days to work with you and, uh, from your background, as, as, as much as I know, we cannot expect anything less than that, so.
Thank you.
Well, uh, same here, Commissioner Saturian. Uh, welcome to Planning Commission. It's kind of, not, kind of odd to have Bing County CPA to be on the Planning Commission. But I appreciate that you'll bring kind of new perspective to our commission.
I hope so.
Welcome.
All right, with that, we can adjourn.